The other one was the parking requirements that was raised at the last city council meeting as well for the, I believe it's a SRO, I don't know exactly the zone, is it the SR, single room occupancy, or the zone is known as the lodging, housing lodging zone? Is that correct, Mrs. Slagel?
No, it's a use, it's a rooming house or lodging.
Rooming house, lodging house, okay. So with that, can we, can we talk about the setback particularly in those sections of the city, as I mentioned in my motion? I understand, as was explained, there are some, there are zones in the city where buildings, as part of the zoning, are allowed to go right up to the sidewalk, in particular commercial areas. And I do understand, after your explanation, the logic behind that because, you know, you have a commercial property, you want to be right on the sidewalk, and there's plenty of it. However, there are some, and I think I had mentioned, and I've seen them throughout the city, like on a Gorm Street where it's residential housing and it's right on the sidewalk. There was another one on Broadway, residential, three doorways, not, no commercial zone, right on the sidewalk. And I, and I feel that I would like to see how we can change, if it is a zoning amendment, to provide some green space or at least some setback, because I have driven around the city a fair amount in some of the densely populated sections of the city, I'm thinking Rock Street or Willie Street, and Habitat for Humanity, they've done some developments, some housing construction, and while there's not a whole lot of green space, it is set off the street. So with that, I know zoning is very complicated, and certainly the questions that came to me from the neighborhood and residents on Mammoth Road and East Meadow, that development where it is right on the sidewalk, and there is no commercial entry on Mammoth Road, certainly the residents, and they've expressed it to all of us, are upset. And could we talk about that area? Because I know we had some discussion about, when we did do the zoning in 2004, where you mentioned that that area was designated as a business area. So can we change it? And to me, we should change, change it when it comes to, if it's commercial, I understand, but when it's residential, just doesn't seem to make, to make sense.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the subcommittee and other members of the council here. I think you're identifying two very distinct, different issues, both about zero setback properties. The first, I think, would be the one on Mammoth Road, which is a mixed-use property that has commercial on the ground floor. For folks who are familiar with the area, the intersection of Mammoth Road and East Meadow, during the last round of zoning, as you mentioned, Council Elliot in 2004, the properties at that intersection and then north on Mammoth Road were zoned as traditional mixed-use properties. So it was intended to be a mixed-use district typically with commercial on the ground floor and housing above. So that was what the council in its wisdom back in 2004, that's the zoning that was passed. And in those districts, it's often the case that for commercial purposes, your desire, and for mixed-use buildings that have commercial, there's a desire to be at streetscape, at the sidewalk edge, and not have a deep setback that would have parking. And so that was the, kind of the vision for that area at the, at the time. There are other districts like it in the city, I think I mentioned some to the councillors before. Bridge Street, as you know, as you go right, right north of VFW, all of that commercial zone, you have all of the, the, the commercial businesses on the frontage. Couple Square, for instance, has, you know, the vast majority of its commercial buildings are set right at the edge of sidewalk. And for those kind of neighborhood commercial districts, and quite frankly, for all of our commercial districts, except for like the big box store ones that we have like out on Roger Street, it's often desirable to have those commercial districts at the sidewalk's edge. And so that would be why that was allowed, and in lots of different areas, we actually discourage folks from pulling their property away from the sidewalk. That's not the case in the TMU. This developer could have pulled that property further away from the sidewalk if he desired to. But in lots of the districts, we don't want them to be that far away from the sidewalk because we want to create that kind of like walkable, you know, edge-of-sidewalk commercial experience for the neighborhood as a kind of a neighborhood commercial area from the crowd. But there's a prohibition from doing that. In some districts there are, but in most residential districts there aren't. The property on Broadway Street is in the acre, and if you go through the acre and look at the vast majority of properties in the acre, they are five feet of setback or less. And if you walk along Broadway Street especially, from Macheris all the way down to that intersection with Willie, every building on that side of the street, including the purely residential ones, are all set at sidewalk. And so that building was required to be that way, to be consistent with the neighborhood. They don't have a choice because that's how, every building at that corner is set at the sidewalk, every residential building along Broadway on that side is set at the sidewalk. And in fact, the buildings that kind of look odd are the buildings that are often pulled back too far from the sidewalk. It doesn't look consistent with the neighborhood. And that's, it's something that we, you know, it's a, it's a delicate balance to try to make sure that we have buildings that are appropriate for the neighborhood, that don't create any kind of problems. But this is, that one was very consistent with the, with the neighborhood in which it's located.
Well, it is, but if you go on both sides of Broadway, from let's say Market Basket, Market Basket and Fletcher, from Fletcher all the way to school, that's a commercial district in large part. In fact, this new development with the three residential units seems to be the only residential development on that property because you have Anton's, then you have McCon Restaurant, then you have a barbershop. You know, before that development, it was a hair salon, or, so it was commercial. And then if you go on the other side, I mean, there's a liquor store, there's a new restaurant opening up, there's a commercial district with a laundromat, et cetera, so. And then even moving down, it's, it's really primarily commercial, so maybe there's some, I'm trying to think, but it just, I just felt having a residential on that busy commercial corridor for people living there, just thought it could be, you know, doesn't look good to me. Maybe it does for others, but I just, I just think there should be a setback. Can I just ask you, there's no residential setback in other neighborhoods? No setback required for residential development, meaning?
Sure.
You can build right on?
In, in some, there's a minimum setback. There's some that have a minimum setback of eight feet, but, but the vast majority of districts have a, have a setback requirement that's a, that's, you have to be at least 25 feet off the street, you know, you gotta, you know, so, so, so I, I, I think I misspoke, which is to say that like, you, in, only in very few districts would you be able to be on the sidewalk.
Okay.
The vast majority of districts have a setback, and I apologize, I think I misspoke. The vast majority of districts have a setback that you can't get in without a, without a variance. Only very few districts are you allowed to, you know, be right on the street, and that the one on Broadway happens to be one of them.
Okay, okay, that, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I think.
I was, I know there's side yard, there are front yards, a minimum frontage, there's, you know, so that's.
Yeah, I apologize, that was a misstatement.
No, 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 it's fine, I mean, it's very, it's very confusing in various senses. I do see that Deb Ford-Giannone, there's no objection from the subcommittee? Do we have questions on this? Other members know? Can, Ms. Fernandez, can we go to Deb Ford-Giannone? She has her hand up.
I know, I know this meeting's going to be short tonight, so I hope that we can have another meeting and can continue these conversations. The development that we're talking about that needs revisiting and a longer discussion is that that property on the corner is the only property out of 21 that's on the sidewalk. And what we were looking for is that there should have been a formula that if every house on the neighborhood has a setback, that this one property does not, because there's only one other property that touched the sidewalk, and it was probably done with one of those. I did it now, I'm asking for forgiveness. We had a block of 21 houses, and every one of them had a setback except for this brand-new development. And so what we're looking for is there has to be some kind of formula, that if you have 21 houses with setbacks, that the last building going in should be consistent with what's already there, and that's part of the neighborhood character. No one can understand how one house could be on the sidewalk when the rest of them, all 21, were not. And we're told it was a judgment call by the building commissioner. So what we're looking for is a set of standards and a formula that's followed, that when you're doing development such as that, in 21 houses, the majority of the houses have some kind of setback, that it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And also, I know Eric's the head of Department of Planning and Development, so when you just misspoke and made that mistake, it's one of those things where making a mistake about something this big, because people that live in those neighborhoods pay their taxes, raise their families, when something happens in a neighborhood, it reverberates, and it's changed that neighborhood, and it didn't meet the guidelines. And so that's what we're looking for. There has to be a standard, there has to be a formula, and an arbitrary decision because somebody thinks it's okay without following a guideline, we're looking for better zoning guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you. Mr. Slagel, can you respond that it was a, you know, building commissioners have jurisdiction to make decisions based upon? Can you answer Ms. Ford-Giannone's question? Because I.
Sure.
I don't like it to be subjective. I mean, we need to have a code, it needs to be, and I understand your point, I mean, you made earlier on the Broadway, that everything was consistent, it may not look good, but we'll agree to disagree, I would hope that there be some green space for anyone that lives there, to have a little porch or a little, you know, something else. You know, maybe that was the case, that's, that's the way it was built hundreds of years ago, and I understand, you know, the reasoning behind that, but can, can you please answer that it's a judgment call?
Sure, and that, that is not correct. It isn't a judgment call. It is a determination by the building commissioner based on the zoning. And the zoning in that district states that the setback shall be consistent with the properties on the block. The block is from, on Mammoth Road, from East Meadow down to?
Eighth.
Is it Eighth? Yeah. So East Meadow, East Meadow down to Eighth, and I believe there are eight properties, of which one of them is on the street. Several of them are between five and 10 feet from the property line. One, I think, is 15 to 18 feet from the property line. In other words, I think that, that, when it says it has to be consistent with the properties on the block, that gave, gave the developer a window. The properties on the block are between zero and 15, and that, that means that's the window within which the developer could, could put the setback.
So wait a minute, wait a minute. So wouldn't we use from zero to 15, shouldn't it be somewhere in between if there's all those? How many, how many properties are there?
I believe there's eight.
So there's eight?
I believe there's eight, yes.
Huh.
And, and so the, the way that that, what that means is, for purposes of zoning, you can put it, as long as it's consistent with one or more of those setbacks, then that's consistent with that block. And we don't, and I know that the, the neighborhood group has, has stated, as Ms. Ford-Giannone mentioned, something about 21 properties. Unfortunately, she's talking about properties that aren't, that aren't considered for that zoning evaluation. She's talking about properties that are around on the, on, not on East Meadow, or, I'm sorry, not on Mammoth Road, but on, on Eighth, and on the cross street that goes between East Meadow and Eighth. And those properties simply aren't in the calculus for what is on the block and needs to be consistent. And that's what the zoning that was written says. I mean, that's how, how it's, how it is determined, is based on that zoning definition.
So the developer could have set it back?
Yes.
So between zero and eight, we went to zero, right on the sidewalk, where it could have been set back further.
He could have set it back much further, absolutely.
But you said one or more, if it was just one, to be consistent with eight, certainly should have been set back more. Right? I mean, if that's what the.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, in a district like this, that, that district, that, I mean, that block has multiple different uses, and there, the different uses have different setbacks. The, the property immediately adjacent to it is a single-family home that's setback, I think it's 15 feet. And that's, that's appropriate for a single-family home, not necessarily appropriate for a mixed-use building. And once we get into those calls, where you have a window of setback that you could be, it's up to the developer to determine, especially in, as we've discussed, this is an as-of-right building, they didn't need to go to get board approval, they can make the determination as to what setback they, they prefer if they have that window.
Can you tell me, in the zoning code, where that, where that language states that it's up to the, well, and not now?
Can you tell me, in the zoning code, where that, where that language states that it's up to the, well, and not now? Just tell me.
I have a feedback in the area. So I would like to know where that language is, because I think it would be helpful, and maybe that's what we need to tighten up, that, that sort of decision or ambiguity that is left up to the building inspector, building commissioner is, is a little bit more definitive. Because my next question would be, what about the other zones in that particular area that were, that was designated back in 2004?
What the setback is for those particular zones? I, I apologize.
They're the same zone, correct?
Well, all the properties that are north of this, this building are in the TMU. The property on Mammoth Road, north on Mammoth Road, are in the traditional mixed-use. The properties to the south of it on Mammoth Road are in the traditional two-family district. So it's a completely different district with different setback requirements.
Okay, so there, that TMU throughout other sections of the city, that same standard would apply where?
Yes.
Based upon, should, should we not, you know, should we not change that in the table of uses to say? I just think, I just think it makes sense to have definitive criteria in developing versus, well, this is, you know, X amount of properties on a particular block have this setback, so you can do this, you have an opportunity. Because quite frankly, I, I would like to see, unless this is strictly in a commercial level where there's lots of foot traffic, it just makes sense to have some setback, that's all. And I guess we have to look at all those TMU. I'm going to stop, sorry for taking all the time. Council Nunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the requirement and setback for a TMU, the traditional mixed-use, applied to all the, most of the, all of the storefronts in the city, Bridge Street, Branch Street, Broadway, Mammoth Road, and, and where else?
No, the traditional mixed-use does not apply to all those, all those locations are not necessarily in that exact district. There, there are multiple traditional mixed-use districts in the city. There are also neighborhood business districts, there are urban mixed-use districts, but the, the specific section to which I'm referring is the setback section for mixed-use properties in the TMU zone.
I see. So the, the TMU, the TMU zone in this Mammoth Road, the corner there, is that, it's not requires setback at all, is there a setback? Is that what you're saying?
The requirement for setback says the setback has to be consistent with the setback of the other properties on the block.
I see. So if the, the other property in the block, there's a setback for it, why shouldn't this one have a setback? Why shouldn't we require this one to have a setback?
Well, again, the, because the, because the block is inconsistent, and, and there are other properties that have no setback. And so in order to be consistent.
It's just one.
That's true, but, you know, there's, there is not a consistent setback on this block. There is, again, a property with a zero setback, a property with a five-foot setback, a property with a 10-foot setback, a property with a 15-foot setback. There, it's not a consistent block, and therefore, you are, you, if every property on the block was setback 10 feet, then consistent would be, require a 10-foot setback. And, and I, I think if you look at the other traditional mixed-use districts in the city, that's the idea, is to try to make it so that instead of having to go through and look at each district and see what that character is at the time, and say, in this traditional mixed-use district that's in South Lowell, everything's eight feet back, but there's this traditional mixed-use district that's in Pataqueville, everything's 15 feet back, and this mixed-use district is zero setback, we just say you have to be consistent, instead of having to create whole different zones with different setbacks all around the city. And that's, that was a decision that was made, you know.
Can, can we, can we apply uniformly, say, the South Lowell, you brought the example of it, there's a setback there, can we make it happen in other neighborhood as well, and those who come on in the future or to, to require the setback? Can you do that? Can we do that?
I, I don't think I understand the.
What I'm saying is that, you know, South Lowell, right? South Lowell, there's a setback, and the TMU over there, right? You know, and, and I believe some of the, Broadway also, there's a setback as well. You know, it's not all TMU zone, no setback requirement, and, you know, so, so why can't we make a uniform that require setback in all TMU zone in the city of Lowell?
Well, I, I think that that's a, the, the danger of that is not, unless the TMU zones are already consistent, you may be throwing a building in there that doesn't look like the rest. And I think that it's important to note that we're here in 2021, this requirement has been in place for 17 years without, as far as I know, any significant controversy or concern about it before now. So I, I would, I would just, I, I would just say, I, I think that, that while I understand and have heard from the neighborhood group, as the, as I believe the councillors have, about their concern about this building, that, that it's, it's also important to note that, that that language hasn't caused a problem and has allowed us to, to make sure that the mixed-use districts around the city kind of look like the buildings are meant to be there. And, and I would be concerned that if this is an anomaly and there's a concern about it, we should be thoughtful about it if we're going to change zoning because of it. That would be my one, my one concern.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I do think as we move forward, and maybe this is, you know, why this is becoming, coming forward, at least from my perspective, as we continue to develop in the city, as more property is developed and more, where we have less and less open space, and developers are becoming more creative in using space, it becomes a concern. And I think that's what happened back in '04, when we did a complete revamping of the city's, of the city's zone, because it was becoming overdeveloped in certain sections with certain developments, and I think that's, that's why I bring this forward. What can we do? We have to continue to change the code as developers become more creative and put more development on smaller property, or not consistent as well. So I, I understand the point, however, I do understand a little bit more the formula that Ms. Ford-Giannone is speaking about, because if it's zero, zero to 15 in this case, why should we not use the mean? We, you know, should we look, you really can't look at the mode or the median, because you could have some blocks that there is no mode or median, you just have to go with the mean, which is the average throughout, and apply that. So I, I do think, I'd like to have that discussion a little bit further, I'd like to see which zones that this would apply, apply to. Certainly not in the downtown. I, I understand, you know, certain business districts, real business, business district. I, there are a couple of businesses up at that intersection, so I see why it's designated, but to me, I don't understand, I, I don't see that as a corridor, there's, there's one, two, not three, so.
If I could make a suggestion, because I know we are short on time today, I could, I can work with the GIS department and MIS to come up with a map of all the TMU zones in the city, and perhaps talk with the staff about whether or not there's a way to, to perhaps add language that would achieve what I think you're, what it sounds like you are talking about, which is, instead of giving a, a builder free rein over anything within the range, can we narrow that free rein a little bit to try to force them into the middle of that range? And that would, we, I could certainly do that for, for a future meeting, if that was the wish of the subcommittee.
I think that makes sense. Council Nunn? Yes, so most of my counsel, Nunn, second to my counsel, Chow, to request Director of Inspection Services to provide a report to outline those TMU zones and recommendations relative to setbacks. We'll call.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Nunn?
Yes.
Three years.
I got kicked out of Zoom again, so I don't know if, we still have some time. Before we go, members of the city council that are here, Council Marcy, Council Samaras, any questions, issues, concerns? We also have a member of the public here, I'd like to recognize, would you like to speak, Mr. Lemay?
Just briefly.
Yep, absolutely. Council Marcy, and then Mr. Lemay.
While you were speaking, I was looking on the big screen, and I saw a woman, and she had her hand up for quite a while.
Okay.
I couldn't see the name from here.
I'm trying to reconnect here, so we will, whoever the person is that's on Zoom, we're, we're going to get you. But while I'm reconnecting, Mr. Lemay, is, are they on Zoom? Can you see? Oh, is it Mr. Hamlet?
I was.
Yeah, I see Mr. Hamlet has his hand up, so could the host list Mr. Hamlet in? And then if there's.
Thank you.
I was telling Mr. Hamlet a woman. There actually was a woman.
Okay, sorry, we'll get to the, the next person.
Yeah, it was, it was Pat who had her hand up, and.
Okay, sorry, that.
It's, it's, it's not up right now. We certainly need more time. There are some general questions that I have. The history of this goes back almost a year. It was, the first building was an A and R, an approval not required, but in fact, the builder and, and his engineer failed to put in landscaped open space, and so there was a stop work order. The builder and, and his engineer. So, so the challenge, of course, is when you have a process called approval not required, but the building commissioner misses important zoning regulations, and what do we do in that circumstance? We have been told that public comment is not solicited in the case of A and Rs, and I think maybe that's something that we could look at. We would like the opportunity to comment publicly other than in a format like this. I know we're pressed for time, so I do want to deal with one specific, and that is, I think the second building is illegal. The second building is supposed to have a setback of one and a half feet, and that one and a half feet is what comprises their landscaped open space. I don't see the one and a half foot setback, I see a wall right against the sidewalk, in which case, they don't have landscaped open space on that side of the building, and the whole building's illegal. So that's, just to start the conversation, and I look forward to our next meeting.
Okay, good. We, we still do have some time, and I don't want to, I know we, folks feel rushed, but Mrs. Slagel, could you answer that?
So, so, so the requirement, because he's on the corner lot, is he's got to have landscaped open space on both fronts, both the East Meadow front and Mammoth Road, and although he's got in his plans, I don't see it on the building, I see a sidewalk and a wall, I don't see a foot and a half setback.
Mrs. Slagel?
I would defer to the building commissioner on that. I mean, I, we just reviewed the plans, the, the as-built have not been submitted to the city, so if they're not compliant with the, the plans and they're not zoning compliant, then they would have to be fixed.
Okay.
You know, we, we only review, for purposes of permitting, obviously, we only review the plans that are submitted. And then they have to submit as-built plans once they're constructed, and if there is in fact a zoning deficiency as a result of the as-built plans, then they're required to correct it or seek relief from the zoning board. So that would be my response to that. But I, I do want to make.
But I, I do want to make one thing clear, and it kind of like leads into another, I think Mr. Hamlet brought up something else that we were going to suppose to discuss this evening?
Yes, A and R.
Which is, which is A and Rs. And I think there's a, a little misunderstanding on, on Mr. Hamlet's part about what that... An A and R is not, doesn't have anything to do with a building permit, or, quite frankly, with zoning compliance. An A and R is an approval-not-required plan to subdivide a lot, and that's all it is. It is not approval of a, construction of a building, it is not approval of zoning compliance of a, of a proposal. It just means that a, a, a land surveyor has measured out the lot, has made the determination that it has sufficient frontage for zoning requirements, and it is a creature of statute, it's part of the subdivision control law. The requirements to meet, to be an A and R plan are in the subdivision control law, and it just allows you to divide a piece of land without having to go in and getting approval from the planning board. It's approval-not-required. It's, that's what A and R stands for. So, the, this, the lot at the corner of East Meadow and Mammoth Road was one lot. To subdivide it into two lots, they filed an A and R plan. Under the state statute that requires A and R plans, there's no public comment, there's no public hearing, there's no, it's not a public process. You're just allowed to do it under the state statute if you meet all the thresholds in that statute, which this property did. It's sufficient frontage as required under our zoning for two separate lots, and so the lots were subdivided. Then, the, what I think that, I think the confusion is, these buildings were built as-of-right, as opposed to requiring a board process. So, lots of times when developers build, build projects, they're required to go to the zoning board, or go to the planning board, or both. Sometimes they have to go to the conservation commission in certain, in certain instances. But in our zoning, as in with every piece of zoning in, in the state, there are projects that, that you can just build without going before a board. If you can fit in the, in the, the front, in the setbacks, and if you have sufficient frontage, and the building's the right size, not too big, and doesn't meet the thresholds for site plan review, developers are just, you're just allowed to build it without going to a board. And, and, and so, that process is a building permit process, which is under the state building code, and there's, that's not, there's no public comment to a building permit. It's, are you meeting the means and methods of constructions that the state has set up? And if you are, you can just build it, because...
Understand.
Sure.
However, when, again, we're in a city of 110, presumably, probably moving close to 120,000 people, 13 square miles, when construction, so, it's close, people in close quarters. So, when it's something like this, or other, other parts of the city, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Lemay, because I, I believe part of our, our ordinance is that when there is a construction project being built, and I believe it was a result of, correct me if I'm wrong, Curtis, it was at Livingston Street, where all of a sudden, construction went up, maybe it was somewhere else, but, Mr. Lemay, I, I did offer you the, a chance to speak, would you like to speak? In reference to that, or anything you would like?
I just feel it's open to interpretation, and to the point that there can be circumvention.
Can you turn that mic on, microphone on, please? Because we're on television.
Hello?
Yep.
For the record, Curtis Lemay, Forty Roberts Street. I, I just, I just think that it's open to interpretation when it's, in this case, an A and R, there's a lot of latitude within the building department. Case in point was today, when I went by the property, coming up towards Drakett from Mammoth Road. I'm not going to hang around while they're working, but they had stringers out, there's a, there's a deck on the, on the side of the house going, if you were coming down Mammoth Road and looking at the house to the left in the rear, the stringers, I'm sure they're going to be cut, I would hope, because they were, they were about within 10 feet of the house next door. So, if that's a deck, and you're going to sit on a deck and look at the woman's window, good luck to you. If that's responsible contractor, I got a bridge to sell you, because it doesn't pass the smell test with me, and it doesn't pass the smell test with the neighborhood. I'm a, I'm a guy that's been in my entire life. The only, when you take into consideration that area, whether you go down to Eighth Avenue, there was one store, it's a hairdresser now, it used to be Ed's Variety, prior to that, it was Dan's Variety, okay? Ed Forrest was there. That was out to the sidewalk. The only, the next one down was Jim's Variety, which is on the corner of Seven, Sixth Ave, which is a barber shop now. That's the closest one. And the next one down after that was 7-Eleven that they built, and there was a store there before, Langley's Shoe Shop and a couple others. And LaPorte's was across the street. Those were the only ones that went out to the sidewalk. Commercial. So, if there was no commercial here, would that apply? I don't have that answer, but definitely, the character of the neighborhood does not look, look right as you go up Mammoth Road towards Drakett. You know, I, I just beg to differ with what's been transpired here. I, I think if the law allows an A and R for public input, positively, it should happen. I think, I think the neighborhood is owed that, whether they're against it or for it. At least you can, you can take in everyone's consideration. You know, I, I just remember, and I don't want to bring up names, but I will, because it's Rita Mercia. She had mentioned when we were talking about this, or another sub, it included a couple of subjects, but there was a, a part in Belvedere that someone wanted to put in two homes, but they were sideways. It's the same thing with Potteckville, okay? You don't put buildings in sideways because it'll fit in. But what about the character or the flavor of the neighborhood that has been around for decades? I know things change, but you got to take everyone that has absorbed the change into consideration. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, we understand that development's going to take place, but, so, I, I think that would be helpful moving forward. We already had the motion in secondary...
That lady has a hand up.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Pat. Pat, I'm sorry. I got kicked off soon, so...
Motion in secondary...
That lady has a hand up.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Pat. Pat, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I got kicked off soon, so...
Thank you.
Motion in secondary...
I'll, I'll be... Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll be brief.
I think you've got to turn off your...
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll be brief.
I think you've got to turn off your...
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll be brief.
I think you've got to turn off your...
Pat, turn down, turn off your TV.
There we go. Okay, now you got to unmute, unmute yourself.
Pat, you have to un... Is that okay now?
Here we go.
Yes. You did it. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, we've got a couple minutes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Pat.
Okay. I haven't figured out, sorry for that, for the television, and I have forgotten to turn up my speakers, too.
It's okay.
But I just want, I'll make a, I'll make it brief. I am in a butter to that property, and I have, I have had, you know, looked at getting a deep pit cut in back of me that, with trees torn down, and an oak tree that is mostly mine, with huge branches torn off without any previous notice, or no, nothing at all, no, no respect at, at all. But what I want to say in terms of the, of the fact that the property, the second property that's not finished yet, that's right on the sidewalk, there's no, no frontage at all, is it permissible, in, in addition to that fact that you say, okay, there's a variation, so he's within the variation? But add to that the fact that that building is very, very tall, and secondly, it is right at the corner of a very dangerous intersection, as we know, on East Meadow and Mammoth, a very dangerous intersection. And it does obscure vision, and was any of this taken into account, both the height and the location on, on, on a, on a dangerous intersection, and because it's within zero to 15, he has the right to ignore, you know, an important factor like that, and just go ahead and do, do, you know, as he, as he will? The commercial part of the whole property is not in that building, it's in the one that's already built, that, you know, is next to another home. And so, you know, there's a driveway into that, and that is not right on the sidewalk, the commercial property that's intended on the first floor. So, why does this three-apartment building get to be such a huge looming thing right on that dangerous intersection? I, I should think that safety factors would also be taken into consideration, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and ability to talk before you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Pat. We'll, we're going to adjourn this meeting, we're going to get some additional information. Motion has been made. Counselor Mercer?
Yes. Lastly, I'd like to say that if you hold another meeting, I would ask that the building commissioner be here. People were questioning things that was not up to Mr. Slagle to answer, but the building commissioner, I think he should be here to answer for himself.
Okay, well, recess is for, we'll see what scheduled, meetings are scheduled, but I think we'll recesses for two weeks. I think that's when the next council meeting is, and we'll request the building commissioner to be there. So, motion to recess by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Chow, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries, this meeting will stand, stand in recess, and we're going to try to schedule this in, in a couple of weeks to get those answers. Thank you, Mrs. Slagle, thank you, Mr. Lemay, members of the city council. This meeting stands in recess.